Let's call the school committee meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is that way, I think.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you for joining us from the brand-new Pine Hill School. Very exciting to have our first school committee here since the building opened. I first want to recognize Western Media, which is recording the meeting for future viewing. Anyone else looking to record the meeting tonight? All right, seeing none, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Just to start off tonight, we actually have a presentation from some alumni. I'm going to have Matt, I don't know if Matt, if you're coming up as well related to this?
We haven't talked about it.
We haven't talked about it, so Matt, I'll ask you to come up and make an introduction, if you can, because you were instrumental in doing this here. So if you want to come up to the, I guess, the mic in the center of the room?
Hello, good evening. So Mike Griffin and Joe Vinci, Westwood High alums. Don't remember what class, but I had both of them as students, which is kind of funny. So they approached me a couple of years ago and had talked about getting, they wanted to get together with an alumni group to then go about, see about doing a fundraiser, which they ended up doing last year. They ran a golf tournament, to go about making a donation to the Westwood High Athletic Program for whatever future needs that we might have. So they have pulled that off last year, and the next one is coming up.
April 26th.
April 26th this year. So looking forward to playing in that again. But I'll turn it over to Mike and to Joe.
Yeah, so thank you very much for having us. And like Matt said, you know, the goal for us was to, you know, raise money to go back into the athletic department, to benefit all student athletes of all the sports in the community, not just one specific sport. Because, you know, Joe and I, growing up in this town, playing sports up at the high school, we know, we saw the benefits, both, you know, on the field, on the court, and off. So we kind of were talking about it a couple of years ago, you know, what do we do? We want to do something. And finally, we said we were going to do a golf tournament. Unfortunately, in 2022, it was a little bit too late to do it. So we said, okay, 2023. And we all conquered and divided tasks, and we all, you know, we all did a great job, sold out with 124 golfers, and, you know, raised a lot of money. And we're here to present a check to you folks in the amount of 7,500 tonight to go back into the athletic department, for Matt to utilize for whatever he sees fit, to help the student athletes of today and for the future.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, like, also just want to make sure I mention Chip Famoni, Alex Jody, and John Buckley. So it's kind of the five of them that were kind of spearheaded this, this whole endeavor that they've gone on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so thank you for having us. It's a pleasure to be here, and we're happy to be able to make that donation, and we hope it goes a long way, Matt, so.
It will, it absolutely will.
Yep, and the event is already sold out for this year.
Okay. When is the event?
It's Friday, April 26th.
Okay, great.
That's a tremendous amount of money. Thank you so much. That's amazing.
Yeah, you're welcome. We look forward to raising more and more as the years go on, and just keep plugging away to all the alumni.
I've talked to a few already who are super excited to go back again this year and participate.
Oh, great.
So I think it's a good community-building event, too, so thank you.
Yeah, we've gotten a lot of, a lot of good feedback, and people are traveling from all over the country, you know, people from Los Angeles flying in, making a weekend out of it. So it's a, it's a really neat event. It's great to see not only the, the athletes, but former coaches, school administrators come back as well. So it's just a great way to build a community, so.
Also like to give a plug to the Beacon Restaurant, which is owned and operated by
Ara Yarian, who was, my class was '98. So this year, the after-golf is going to be at Beacons on Route One in Walpole, and they gave us the whole restaurant, not the function hall upstairs, the whole restaurant. So Ara and his brother Evan were very generous with that, both Westwood guys as well, so we're very happy to take, to take the after event to their establishment, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We know who jumps in to take it. And, and just, just, the committee will vote formally to accept it at the end of the agenda this evening, but, but don't feel like you need to stick around for that, so. So thank you, thank you all. Continuing on the theme of athletics, I do want to, we have reached the end of the winter sports season. The spring sports season starts next week, but just as a recap from winter sports, so teams had very successful seasons. All of our teams made their prospective, made their respective stage tournaments. Boys swim team finished in fifth place at the MIA D2 State Meet. There were three new team records, Declan McDonald in the 200 IM, Jason Guo in the two, in the 50 free, and the relay team of Shane McDonald, Jason Guo, Jack Stoller, and Declan McDonald in the 200 free. Our Westwood divers competed at the MIA State Finals. Ava Pruskenis finished seventh, and Victoria McGowan eighth, so congratulations to them. Boys and girls track athletes competed at the Reggie Lewis in the MIA D3 Meet. Girls placed fifth. Boys 22nd overall, lots of PRs by both teams, and congratulations to Ruby Codrington for her first-place finish in the 300 meters. Boys hockey qualified for the state tournament for the 41st year in a row. Congratulations to them. And girls hockey advanced to the round of 16. Boys basketball also to the round of 16, and the girls also made the tournament but lost in the preliminary round. And our ski team had two skiers advance to the state championships held at Wachusett Mountain. So congratulations to all of our winter athletes. It's also, we're hitting event season for various student performances, so I had the pleasure of being at the, at the first public, public event at Pine, for students here at Pine Hill yesterday afternoon for our Grade Five chorus concert, was at Sheehan's chorus concert this morning, and then I think most of the people around this table are going to the opening night of the, of the high school musical, Anything Goes, which is running through Saturday. So looking forward to all of that. Just some other things that are on the agenda this evening. I'm not going to necessarily go through all of the timelines here. It's linked in the agenda, and these, these memos will be public on the website. We have a number of administrative searches that are starting. We've begun the assistant superintendent search. Again, congratulations to Allison, who we will miss terribly, but we, we need to, you know, we are moving forward in the process, and we need to move forward in the process, so. So that work is underway. The goal for that search is to have a candidate, an identified candidate in front of this committee on, at the meeting on April 11th. By state law, assistant superintendent positions are recommended by the superintendent to the school committee and require an up or down vote of the committee in public session. So that's how that process will work. Similarly, since the last time we met, and I want to acknowledge that Josh Ballmer is leaving as the principal here at Pine Hill, Josh, I, I, this is my opportunity to thank you, but there you are, is your, my opportunity to thank you publicly for all of your time here, and for just a Herculean effort in getting this building open. I think those that didn't see kind of how this went down, didn't know just how much work went into this from your perspective, and so I can't thank you enough for doing that while at the same time bringing two communities together from Hanlon and Deerfield in a, in a wonderful and beautiful way. So thank you for that. You're going to be incredibly missed, and I thank you for everything. The same time, we're beginning the Pine Hill principal search. So on Tuesday of this week, we put a message out to the community looking for members to be part of that search team. The goal for that search is to try to finalize that right around May 1st. Knowing that we also will need to do an assistant principal search for Pine Hill, we will want the new principal to be, obviously, really, really involved in that search process. So we will probably post that position before we have the new principal onboard, but not start the interviewing process until the new principal is onboard. That will still provide a timeline where we can hit that hire before the school year lets out ideally, so that person can be there for all the summer work that needs to take place. Just if the committee has any questions around it, I'm certainly happy to entertain them, but, but just wanted to share that. The last thing that is on the agenda is that the facility study RFQ did hit the street yesterday, so thank you to Michelle Miller at Town Hall for getting that up. You have the link to that. So the RFQ closes, proposals are due by April 1st, and we'll be interviewing essentially the week right before April vacation to try to get a firm onboard so we can do the vision work we need to do during May and June. The last thing with a, with a heavy heart this evening, since the last time that we met formally as a committee, we lost Tim Chant unexpectedly and suddenly as our Director of Wellness of the district. His loss has been felt tremendously by, by Freddie here, and I want to take a moment and just ask for a moment of silence, if we could, on Tim's behalf. Thank you. Appreciate that. And Tony, I will turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Tim. We're going to move on to public participation, public participation opportunity for members of the public to come and speak. Per our policy, if you're interested in speaking, if you could come forward here, speak your name and address. Per our policy, you have up to three minutes to speak, and finally, per our policy, we don't respond directly, but, you know, we obviously take the input. Introducing public participation, is there anyone here tonight that would like to participate in the public participation? Seeing none, we will move on to the school committee chair liaison report. Why don't I start with a few updates? First, for members of the community, our next school committee roundtable is on Tuesday the 19th at 6 o'clock at the PD room? PD room. So that's, that's, for those of you who haven't attended, they've been really well received by members of the public, their opportunity to interact with two school committee members, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and it's a much, it's an opportunity, really, where you can go back and forth, ask questions, and have an open dialogue, something that's challenging the school committee. So encourage members of public that are free to come on Tuesday at 6:00. Just for folks to know, we, we tend to alternate between days and evenings, just to kind of be equitable to people whose schedules are different. So this, this one will be in the evening, we'll have one final one in May that will be in the, during the day. So encourage folks to attend. There will be a communication, I think, going out on that tomorrow as well, just to remind people. Second, Tim and I and Lima attended the Finance Commission meeting on, losing track, Tuesday, I believe. It went well. This meeting is when the actual subcommittee chairs and the subcommittees report out to the FinCom on the, what their findings were. Bill Bruce did a really great job. They had some questions for us as well, but I think it overall went really well, and people were very supportive of the budget. So that's going along. I think the final public hearing is in another two weeks, and then that will kind of go towards town meeting, which is fast approaching. And that's, I think those are the biggest things I had. The only other thing, I'll talk about the norms. Joy and I are working through kind of a draft of the norms, and we hope to bring that to this committee next month. So we will talk about that the next month, and that's all I had, but any other liaison reports? Okay. All right. Great. With that, with further ado, if there aren't any, we will go into the one discussion item, the Pine Hill update.
Yes, very exciting. Okay, so just to give a little bit of a background here, in December 2017, Westwood, this is really when this project kicked off. Westwood was admitted into the MSBA grant reimbursement program to address the needs specifically of the Hanlon School. That was the school we applied for. In October 2021, at a special town meeting, we asked the town of Westwood to vote for the construction of a new elementary school. So more than six years since this project started, we've now built the school. Clearly, we're sitting in it. The school is up and running, but because so much time has passed between, since when we started back in December of 2017, and now, you know, we've got new families in town, people who may not have been paying attention to this project for seven years, I thought it'd be a good idea to come back and remind everybody sort of how we started, how it's going, and where it's going. So I don't think I need to tell you guys, but for the purpose of the video, the new Pine Hill School is located behind the existing Hanlon School, which is on Gay Street, so it's on your left as you approach Washington Street. So when we started this project, we knew that we wanted to, and apologies, because I know a lot of you have heard this many, many times, but I'm going to, I'm going to do it anyway. When we started the project, we knew we wanted to build more than a neighborhood school. We really wanted this school to be a building that Westwood residents would have the opportunity to enjoy. So our goals were to, one, provide high-quality instructional space for 21st century learning; two, have a large gym with multiple courts; three, add new playing fields; four, we need, we wanted to provide additional performance space, not just for the school, but for the school district, and also for community productions. We wanted to ensure that residents had access to Lowell Woods. And finally, we needed to, of course, ensure that traffic was not a disaster. So those were sort of the high-level goals of the project. So why did we need a new school? In 2015, the Westwood School Committee commissioned a master capital plan study, which indicated that despite excellent maintenance practices, three schools, Hanlon, Deerfield, and Sheehan, were really in need of many significant repairs, and they just had inadequate educational spaces. And some examples here, you can see, for a physical, the HVA system was, the HVAC system was so old, we couldn't get contractors to bid on the repair work. That was at Hanlon. We had exposed rusting pipes throughout the schools. We had windows that did not open, or windows that didn't close properly, and consequently, in winter, we were air conditioning some of the rooms because it was so hot that we, you know, it's just, none of the HVAC systems worked properly. At Hanlon, you can see here, we had an entire ceiling collapse in one of the classrooms. That, there's that lovely photo. And then for educational, we had auxiliary closets that were being used as breakout and classroom spaces, and we had classrooms that were repurposed as libraries, for example, this middle-bottom photo here, which clearly was, is just, they were so small, in order to fit the collection, we had to do high bookcases, but when you've got little kindergarteners, they get lost in the bookcases, so clearly not an ideal situation. I want to emphasize, these schools were, and the Sheehan continues to be, very safe, but at some point, we knew that a major repair was going to be required, which would be large enough to trigger a code violation, and then we were going to wind up with just an enormous amount of renovation costs. So for that reason, the, the statement of interest to the MSBA was submitted in 2017. And the reason Hanlon was chosen as the project is because that report indicated to us that that would have the most likelihood of success if we were to submit the grant with Hanlon as the applicant. So that strategy paid off. We were admitted on our first try, and the project began. So just a quick reminder about the MSBA. This is the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This is the organization in the state. It receives a percentage of the sales tax, and its function is to distribute funds in the forms of reimbursement grants to just, to school districts so that they can do capital projects. It's a highly competitive program to get into, and so we were very lucky to get in, again, in December of 2017. And ultimately, when we came out in April of 2021, that was when the MSBA voted to grant us about $18.2 million in reimbursement for the construction of a new Hanlon-Deerfield school. So once we were into the MSBA program, we started gathering feedback from the community, and I wanted to emphasize this again, because this was a key component of this entire project. We really, again, we really wanted this to be a community-wide project, not just a, you know, Hanlon district project. So we did a whole bunch of things to reach out to the residents in the hope of getting them involved. We created a website devoted exclusively to the project. We held 75 public meetings. Since then, we've prob, I mean, since that number, I'm sure we've held more, including 14 community forums that were open to the public and designed expressly to solicit, solicit feedback from residents. That was the only purpose of those 14 community forums. We held school tours of Hanlon and Deerfield to demonstrate, you know, the need for the school, so people could see for themselves what the issues were. We wrote multiple letters to residents, updating them on the project. We wrote newspaper articles. We created information brochures. We filmed and broadcast video updates through the Westwood Media Center. Many thanks to Charlotte and her team for all the work that they did on this project. And we really provided so many opportunities for written and for in-person feedback, that by the time we got to the design phase, we really felt like we had a true sense of what the community wanted. So we then engaged the architecture firm of Doran Whittier, who ultimately provided us with 15 different options, ranging from just repairing Hanlon in its existing location, to combining Hanlon and Sheehan at the Sheehan site, combining Hanlon and Sheehan at the Hanlon site, combining Hanlon and Deerfield at the Hanlon site, a whole host of options. We had 15 in total. We looked at repairing versus replacing the school. We looked at what it would look like if we consolidated Hanlon and Deerfield, and what would it look like to the town if we consolidated Hanlon and Sheehan. And we used all of that information and put it into the rubric of this sort of main criteria. And from this criteria, we narrowed it down to about seven, seven projects that were sort of the top seven, and from that, we went into even more specific criteria, and finally came up with the winning project, which was a new school on the Hanlon site with a consolidation of Hanlon and Deerfield. So this was the original, this was the slide we presented when we voted and accepted this project. So clearly, new construction, design enrollment of about 560 students at the current Hanlon location. So this is, this is going to, now I'm going to get into sort of the floor plans. Again, we're sitting in it, so it's a little surreal, but I think it looks kind of like this. As you can see, one of the things we really thought about in this building is we really wanted to separate the public spaces from the private spaces. Because we were building a large gym, because we have this cafeteria space, because we even have some conference rooms here that we knew that other members of the community could use, we wanted to make that available to the community while still protecting the integrity of the academic wing. So where that dotted line is between public and private, if you go out this door and you take a right, there's a set of double doors there, we can lock those down, lock those off very easily, so that the entire academic wing, which is housed in that area, essentially is separated from this public area. So we can have basketball tournaments here, we can have meetings in this, and there are functions in this room, while still protecting the academic portions of the school. That was a very intentional part of this design. The other thing I wanted to talk about in the design is clearly, this is a much larger school than the two schools that formed it, and one of our concerns was we didn't want it to feel so huge. We really wanted it to be a cozy big school. So what we did is we created these neighborhoods. So kindergarten has its neighborhood, first grade has its neighborhood, and you can really see those in this, in the floor plan. And I think you feel them, too, when you're out in the space, but the floor plan really highlights it. Second floor, floor plan, again, showing you just the academic piece, the public spaces are now in white. And so now, what I thought it would be kind of fun to do is show the renderings that we showed at town meeting, to see how accurately, you know, we cap, we were able to build what we promised we were going to build. So this is what we promised, now a lot of, again, we're all here, so we all know what this looks like, but this is what we promised, and this is what we delivered. And these photos are old. These are probably, were taken in January, so the building looks a lot lacered now, but this is what we delivered. Again, an exterior shot. Again, it looks much better now. This is the lobby. This is the pre-move lobby. Boxes are in there. Cafeteria that we're sitting in. Cafeteria being built. The gym. I mean, they're pretty spot-on, actually. They did a good job building the plans. Here's a classroom, what we imagined it would look like. Here's what it actually looks like. The playground, what we imagined it would look like, what it actually looks like. I think that might be it. Yep, okay. So I, one important feature of the school that we've talked a little bit about, I really wanted to highlight tonight, is the sustainability. When we started this project, the town of Westwood had already made the decision, I think in its, in, I'm forgetting what it's called, that sort of the, Tony, what am I talking about? You know that, the thing that Charlie worked on?
Visioning?
It was like the, the community...
Steering.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Charter.
Charter.
No, that's what I was thinking.
Preservation.
No.
I don't know.
I know. It doesn't matter. The point is, the town of Westwood had already committed to looking into sustainable building with respect to the town. It had made a commitment along, you know, with the help of Tom Philbin, to really try and make Westwood as green as it possibly could. So we went into this project with that viewpoint, knowing that the town had already made that commitment, and we made sustainability a priority in this project. And so this is a list of just some of the sustainable features that I wanted to highlight. The first being, this building is net-zero energy. It is one of the first public schools in the state to be a net-zero-energy building. And just for people who, who might not know, the definition of net energy, net-zero energy, is that the school will produce enough renewable energy to meet the amount of energy that it needs to operate. And the way we're doing that is 60% to 70% of the energy will be generated by solar panels that we have on the roof, or that will be on the roof, I should say. And the, the balance is going to be provided by renewable energy, energy certificates that the town receives for the generation of that energy. So between those two things, we're going to get to 100% of the building usage. This was sort of a pipe dream when we started the project. We always knew we wanted to be net-zero-energy-ready, but the fact that we actually got there is is a huge, a huge win for this project. Second, energy use intensity. This is the measurement of the amount of energy a building uses on a per-square-foot basis, very similar to your miles per gallon in your car, if you want to think of an analogy. It's, it's really a prime indicator of the building's energy performance. A typical baseline building has an EUI of about 55. We're anticipating that this school will have an EUI of 22.6, so significantly lower than a typical building. Also, we are tracking lead gold. When we started the project, we were tracking lead silver, but we were able to bump up a level. This is the second-highest level, so this building will be a lead gold building. I talked about the PV panels that we're putting on the roof. The building is fossil-fuel-free. The only exception to that is we have an emergency generator that operates on gas, but on a day-to-day basis, it's fossil-fuel-free. And one of the ways we do that is with our geothermal heating and cooling system. We talked a lot about this at the SBC. This is a more expensive heating system to put in, but we knew that, again, with this commitment to sustainability, and also with the savings we would receive on a going-forward basis for operational costs, we decided to invest in this and look for other places where we could save. So what the geothermal heating system is, it's a heating system that uses the energy from the ground to operate. We dug 60 wells along the property that are 600 feet deep each, and this is how we heat and cool the building. Finally, the building has a highly efficient building envelope. That means, you know, the insulation is, is, is super strong. We thought very much about the window-to-wall ratio. You have to have the right balance, because if you have too many windows, then you're not going to be quite as efficient, but we wanted enough windows to make sure this felt like a light and airy building, so that ratio was very important. And also, we have, we use mainly native plantings, some of which don't require any water at all. Again, all of this is a view to be sustainable. So now I'm going to get into the cost. So, so as of the fall of 2021, we had had three town votes to fund this project. The first one was in the spring of 2018, when we asked the town for $1.75 million for the feasibility study. In spring of 2021, we asked the town for additional $1.46 million. That was bridge funding to get us through the summer, so we wouldn't have to go pencils down on the design, and we could remain on, on schedule. And then finally, in the fall of 2021, at a special town meeting, we had the big ask, which was when we asked the town to authorize about $84.6 million to fund the balance of the project. So all in, in 2021, we had an authorized cost of $87.8 million. That was the amount that the town was authorized to borrow to pay for this building. At that time, we said to the town, you know, even though we're asking you to authorize, you know, this $87.8 million, we expect a reimbursement from the MSBA of about $18.2 million, so the effective cost to the taxpayer would really be about $69.5 million. Then, we hit COVID, and the construction market went bananas. And when we went out to bid in April or May of 2022, when we got our bids back, unfortunately, we came, that bid came in $3.5 million over budget. A lot of other projects... A lot of other projects, MSBA projects, who were, you know, in our timeframe, hit this, hit this problem. I'm gonna explain how we dealt with it in the next slide, but what we knew we didn't wanna do is we didn't wanna go back to the taxpayer and ask for more money. So I'll explain how we got there in the next slide. The other thing when the bids came in, we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure we included alternates one and two. Even though these were alternates, we really felt they were critical to the building. The first one was adding a UV filtration system to the, to the air circulation, and the second was adding that long canopy in front of the building. That was, that's key, of course, for accessibility and also for protection for the students from getting, when they're getting dropped off on the bus, or just making sure everyone can get into the building and not, you know, in a safe manner. Finally, as we went through the project, we were able to add, to reverse some of the value engineering things that we had taken out, and that was about $400,000. So at the end of the day, the revised project cost of this building is about $92.1 million. So how do we pay for that? So, we've got $92.1 million, we've got a $92.1 million building. We didn't use 202,000 of that 1.75 feasibility money, so, you know, that's amount, that's money that we're subtracting in this slide because we never had to borrow it. On top of that, the school committee, to get us over that, you know, that overage that I showed on the last slide, the school committee authorized the use of about $2 million in mitigation funds. These are funds that the school district got when University Station was built to mitigate any potential impact of more students than they thought would be coming. We always expected that money to be sort of rainy day money. It always was gonna be one-time-use money, so we really couldn't think of a more rainy day use for it that was more appropriate than this scenario. So the school committee did authorize $2 million to go toward this project. On top of that, working with the town, we were able to secure ARPA funding. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act. This is the federal funding that came out of COVID to help communities recover. These were restricted funds. You had to use them for infrastructure only. Luckily, we had a lot of infrastructure in this building, specifically that HVAC system I talked about. So we were able to get two rounds of funding, of ARPA funding, $1.1 million in the first and around, just over $1 million in the second. As I mentioned, we, we were, you know, anticipating an MSBA reimbursement of about $18.2 million. What ended up happening just this past fall is because so many of these MSBA projects that were in-flight during COVID ran into financial difficulties, just as we did, the MSBA was granted a whole, I think around $100 million of additional funds to distribute to these 30 projects that were in-flight at the time and were really affected by that huge inflation. And because of that, this project received an additional $3.7 million. So all of that, when you subtract all of these sources from the $92.1 million price tag of this building, it brings the total project cost down to town residents of $66.4 million, which I am very proud to say is around $3 million less than we told everyone we expected the town share to be. So I should emphasize, these numbers are, as of today, this is a live budget, this is constantly changing, but we're about 75, 80% of the way through this project. You know, the building is built, we still have to take down the Hanlon School, but we have, you know, we've got mitigation and contingencies in place for that. So I am hopeful that we will really see, I guess I would say, a reduction in the hit to the town payer, taxpayer for this project. What else do I wanna say here? So this is the final slide. So, you know, we moved the teachers in over February break. The students returned from February vacation to a brand-new school. We held community tours on Friday, March 8th, where we had about one, somewhere between 1,000 to 1,500 people come through the school, come through the doors. The ribbon-cutting ceremony for the school will be held on Friday, April 5th, in the morning, and I think we're going to be offering more community tours that afternoon for those who didn't make it. But really, what I just wanted to say is, from the start, this project really has been a, a town-wide community project. We've had amazing engagement from Westwood residents, and at the end of the day, we really feel that this project really does faithfully reflect all of the feedback we collected since the project's inception. We're incredibly proud of this school for so many reasons, but mainly because the school will be just a tremendous place for Westwood students to learn, to grow. And so I just wanna thank the, the residents of Westwood for the tremendous support of this project. I think it's proof, not just of Westwood's commitment to our schools, but Westwood's commitment to our entire community, for this generation, for generations to come. And I think, you know, we had a, we had a great time doing this project, so we're not done yet. We had some hiccups, we're not done yet, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question that might be for you, Tim? The question I've been getting the most now, now that this building's built, is what's going, what's happening with Deerfield? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things related to Deerfield. One, just to put any sort of outside rumors at bay, I mean, the Deerfield remains in the care, custody, and control of the school committee. That being said, we are partnering with the town so that they can continue to offer recreation programs at Deerfield through spring and through summer at a minimum, while we examine the fate of Deerfield through the master planning facility study that we're doing. So once, we're gonna have those, at least draft results, kind of as we head into the fall. It's an asset, we wanna continue to be able to use that as an asset for the community to run recreation programming in there. And that's the extent of what's happening with Deerfield in the short term. I think as we look more long-term, I think something that this committee may wanna consider in further conversation is bringing together some representative group, call it a, you know, Deerfield Reuse Advisory Committee, something like that, to bring together, you know, folks from, sort of the, you know, neighbors and other people in the neighborhood, you know, people from this committee, some other folks from the educational side, to determine what, if any, future educational use within the role and jurisdiction of the school committee could or should Deerfield be used for, to at least try to make some recommendation to the committee about future disposition, once we had, starting that work and then knowing that it will also be informed clearly by the facility study work that we're doing. So I don't think that's a discussion point tonight, but I, I raise that as something to potentially consider for the future, so.
I have a question too, related to Pine Hill. I was surprised to see that it's included in the RFQ for the Capital Needs Plan, since I think that just goes out 10 years, right?
Yeah, so the reason it's included in the, in the plan, we're not looking at, at them in the RFQ to, you know, recommend building upgrades, but we do need to look at long-range enrollment projections. And as we look about how do we utilize Pine Hill as part of that plan, how do we make sure that we maximize the efficacy of this building to meet the educational needs of our, of our schools, right? And if we see that there's gonna be some major demographic change in, as, as best as you can project, you know, seven, eight years down the road, does that have an impact on how Pine Hill is used? I think it's, it's, I can't imagine there's gonna be a lot of time invested in that from a facilities perspective, but as we think about plan options, I think it's important for it to be part of the RFQ in that, in that regard.
Other questions for Tim or Maya?
One thing I did wanna mention, we've gotten a lot of questions about the paving on Gay Street, about the sidewalks, I should say. So, right now, you know, we're in the process of taking down the Hanlon. We expect that the Hanlon School itself will probably be fully down by either the end of this month or the beginning of April. But because of that, the construction of the new fields and this, and that sidewalk there don't allow for any sort of temporary sidewalk to be along that place. It provides just enough work, you know, where the site fencing is located, it's just enough space for them to cut and demo the existing asphalt, install the curb and the concrete. We're working with the construction team to try and expedite the installation of the sidewalk, but for now, if people want to walk along Gay Street, I know there isn't a sidewalk on the other side, so the safest way to do it is to come into the school, walk through the parking lot using the sidewalks, and walk back out onto Gay Street. I hate to say, you gotta do that little U-turn. But we're, as I said, it's temporary, we're working as, as hard as we can to get that new sidewalk installed, but until then, you gotta do the loop. Sorry.
More stuff.
Yep.
So you've received a lot of questions about Deerfield. I received a lot of questions about Sheehan, his child there. So I just wanted to point out that this study that we're doing is for all the buildings, including Pine Hill, and that does include Sheehan. Just think folks are not sure what's, where that stands.
Yeah, I, I know, I, as, and by the way, I appreciate you mentioning the, the tours, Maia. If I can just take a second and thank everybody, aside from, you know, me and Tony and, and Maia and Joanna, that we're all here giving tours, to recognize LeMaitre Jean Baptiste, Steve Hullett, Latifah Frank, Suma Selly, John Cummings. Tom Carey was just here and then pitched in because there were so many people and led a whole bunch of tours as well. I wanna thank Glenn Atkinson for being here to help support some of our students that were coming over from Downey, our custodial staff here at Pine Hill. I, I saw Shelley around earlier, I wanna make sure I, I recognize her. And then Chin from Vertex, who was obviously here as well too. So I just wanna give those thanks. But that wasn't your question, your question was about Sheehan, so I don't, I don't wanna lose the main thread. Yeah, so, yeah, I gotta ask the question, you know, as people came through, like, you know, what about Sheehan? And the purpose of the facility study is to figure out, okay, what's next? Knowing that we have some really significant needs at Sheehan, knowing that we have some really significant needs at Thurston. And what we don't yet have is the kind of plan that we had in 2015 that allowed us to build this building. And so that's the next step of the process. We're gonna bring people into that process, and I'm looking forward to what it's gonna result in and where we're heading next.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna have one more Pine Hill little update. It would go without saying that we have someone here, two seats for me, that we'd like to thank tonight. But before that, we need to set the historic record, as I often do.
You wanna have Tony the Clicker, Maia?
I am, yeah, I am, I am the historian of the school committee. All right, so first of all, how did it all begin? So, this is a true story somewhat. So, so, true story, she was elected six years ago, and Charlie Donahue calls me up a few days later and says, what do you think of this Maia Plotkin? What do you know about her? So I say, I gave her her CV, Northwestern lawyer, family, very bright, and I said, and she's a real estate attorney, so she'd be perfect for this PVC chair. And Charlie says, I think that's a perfect idea. She'd be perfect. So, hence, for the official record.
Oh my God.
And this is what Maia looked like when she was, started this six years ago. That's, that's her and her sister. So, anyway, she's aged well, right? Anyway, historical record from the minutes.
Oh my God.
I know, I know. All right, so then there was, the other key of dates to note was the special election at town meeting in 2021.
Oh no.
No, it's not bad. There's the vote, which was that, if you remember that, that was the very cold night on Clay High Hill. There's the Tim Russert book, famous, we were over at Conrad's. And I will just say, for those of you that don't know Maia that well, you think she's very reserved, conservative, but boy, this woman can dance when she's happy. So, so anyway, so.
Oh my God.
Sorry, sorry. All right, so then there was the, she talked a little bit about the inflation, and often it was the case, unfortunately, unfortunately, Maia's first text or call was to me. So it was late one night, and I, my best idea when the inflation hit was, let's play a little bit of Jerry Ford and get our buttons out. Fortunately, her second call was to LeMaitre, who said, we have this $2 million that we could put forward it. And hence, you can see the mitigation funds were approved in July of 2021. And then, what is this? Oh, the groundbreaking, this is just, that's past and former school community members. And then this, I don't think I've ever seen Maia as happy as this, when she was blasting the ledge. I'd never seen her so happy. So, anyway, that's a picture there.
It was very fun.
And then, school opens. So, we would just like to say thank you to Maia.
It wasn't kind of planned. It was so unnecessary, because it was not, you know it wasn't just me.
Well, it was a lot, I'd also like to thank her better half who's here with us. I can only imagine the dinner conversations over the last six years. But we'd also like to, also present a little gift, if Harley's ever been got it. So it's a picture, of course, of the new school with-
Oh my God.
With this dedication, which I'll read. "In deep appreciation of Maia Plotkin's extraordinary dedication, inspiring leadership as Chair of the School Building Committee, we are profoundly grateful for her tireless efforts in realizing the vision of Pine Hill Elementary, with heartfelt thanks for her commitment to Westwood Public Schools and Enduring Magazine." So thank you, Maia, for everything.
Thank you.
Sure. Harley owes me a beer now, I told you. Anyway, all right, thank you. That's it.
That was enough. Thank God this wasn't live.
Thank you, though.
Thank you, guys. You know what, there's so many people, I'm, I'm saving it for the ribbon-cutting, but I really do have like an Oscar speech list of people to thank. You know, I think the one person I have to mention who's not here is Emily. I mean, this was her, you know, she started this. I remember when I was running for school committee campaigning, I would go to her road shows, and she had the whole spiel down, and I was thinking, wow, this is very impressive, what an exciting project. And it was, you know, she really drove this, and I, I feel like without her, we wouldn't have this school either. And I'm sure she will be at the ribbon-cutting, and I'm sure we will honor her there. And the other person is, is John Cummings, who, once we got to the construction phase, picked this thing up and ran with it, and really was all over our project team and made sure that we had, we, we built the building we wanted to build. And finally, I wanna thank Tim for coming in at the end and, and picking, you know, picking up the pieces, and of course, Josh, who, I mean, this is your school as much as it is anyone's, so we are really going to miss seeing you around here. And all of the work that you did, not just designing this school, but the, the, you know, the, the sort of ambassador that you became for the consolidation was tremendous. So thank you very much for that. And there's so many more people, I'm not even gonna get into it, but this is, I'm really touched, I was not expecting this. Certainly not those photos. But thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, great. I think we move on to action items on time, so everyone can get to the play. First action item is vote to approve the Eclipse glasses donations. Do I have a vote to approve the Eclipse? This is a bunch of PTO donations, eh?
Yeah, correct.
Vote to, do I have a motion to approve the Eclipse glasses donation? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Great, unanimous. Next is vote to approve the February 8th meeting minutes of the school committee. Do I have a motion to, approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous. Next is vote to approve the academic decathlon field trip. Do I have a motion to approve the academic decathlon field trip? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous. Next is vote to accept the donation from Westwood Athletics Alumni, which we got today. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous. Finally, vote to approve non-bargain rates. I don't know if you have anything to say on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty standard. There is, I mean, there are some increases as well for, for substitutes in there, knowing that we're trying to address some of the shortage that we have in getting substitutes, but other than that, it's a, it's a pretty standard rate increase.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the non-bargain rates? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? All right, unanimous. Anything else? Any other new business?
I'm sorry I didn't say this when we were discussing the acceptance of the donation for the Eclipse, I just, the Eclipse glasses. I just wanted to thank the PTOs, they all came together and donated money to, for funding for those glasses, so all of our students can look safely at the sun on Eclipse Day. And while we won't be taking a district-wide field trip up to Vermont to watch it, I think the opportunity for them to experience this safely is commendable, and I appreciate the PTOs, all of them, that supported that effort.
While we're talking about PTOs, I just wanted to, I don't know how many people are aware, but there is a, a body of volunteers from each of the PTOs that have come together to form what's called a school engagement committee that, and they work with Latifah and Donna to advise some of the PTOs on the activities that they're doing, to ensure that they're inclusive- that they're inclusive, and they have been the drivers behind what you might have seen are the caregiver conversations that have been taking place over the last almost year now. The next one is going to be on March twenty-sixth, and it is entitled Supporting LGBTQ Students and Families in Westwood. So it will be actually here, at Pine Hill, in the library, from six-thirty to eight-thirty. So, lots of good effort being put in by parent volunteers there.
Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, none? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. It's a record. I can't believe you thought-